It's seven o'clock and I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We have four applications that were posted in the public hearing. Three of those are being continued to January. We will not have any discussions on one crooked lane, seventy-five Harbor or eighty-nine Bridge. So if there's anybody in the audience on Zoom.
We don't always know either, so you're not.
It's not known too.
Not like, yeah, I would. Breaking news, it's just breaking news. Thank you. Good night.
Let me, this is all about me?
Yeah, first we have to vote on all of the continuances.
Just take a second.
Okay. So I will open the public hearing for the application of Joseph Falzone on behalf of Francesca C. Falzone, trustee of the Black Cove Realty Trust, for a special permit under sections five point zero, seven point two, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary to allow for a change of use from a nonconforming use parking and storage to a single-family residence in a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot at seventy-five Harvest Street, assessor's map number twenty-two, lot number thirty-two in District E, with the town clerk on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Falzone is unable to attend this public hearing since he's ill with COVID and has requested that we continue the application. So I will make a motion. At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the special hearing to January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. And extend the period for writing the decision to April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, for the application of Joseph Falzone on behalf of Francesca C. Falzone, trustee of Black Cove Realty Trust, for a special permit under sections five point zero, seven point two, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary to allow for a change of use from a nonconforming use parking and storage to a single-family residence in a nonconforming structure on a nonconforming lot at seventy-five Harvest Street, assessor's map number twenty-two, lot number thirty-two in District E, filed with the town clerk on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second?
A second.
Sean seconds. Any discussion? I'll take a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. The next application is for one crooked lane. I will open the public hearing for the application of Lindsay D. and Val- Valdemir Ruchusne for a special permit under sections four point two, E four, six point three point three, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary to construct a sixty-two foot by thirty-two foot sports court at one crooked lane, assessor's map number thirty-two, lot number ninety-eight in District A, filed with the town clerk on November seventh, twenty twenty-three. This afternoon, I received correspondence from the applicant attorney Mark Glofsky and due to the many comments from the neighbors, they have requested a continuance to January. So I will make that motion. At the request of the applicants, I move to continue the public hearing to January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. And extend the time to write the decision to April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. For the application of Lindsay D. and Valdemir Ruchusne for special permit under sections four point two point three four, six point three point three, and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And the other relief is may be necessary to construct a sixty-two foot by thirty-two foot sports court at one crooked lane, assessor's map number thirty-two, lot number ninety-eight in District A, filed with the town clerk on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a second?
I second.
Any discussion? Go to a vote then. Rob?
Yes.
Catherine? Yes. John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And Sarah says yes.
Okay, I've been freezing all day. That's just me. It's on, but I live in a drafty old house.
Okay. Next application is for eighty-nine Bridge Street. I will open the public hearing for the application of Andrew and Jennifer McGonis for a special permit under sections four point two point three five and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary to install an in-ground swimming pool at eighty-nine Bridge Street, assessor's map number twenty-seven, lot number thirteen in District C, filed with the town clerk on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. The applicants have not yet been able to provide us with sufficient details on the pool to allow the board to reach a decision, so they have requested a continuance until January. At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the special whips. In a, I'm gonna make a motion, yeah. At the request of the applicant, I move to continue the special hearing to January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. and extend the period for writing the decision to April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, for the application of Andrew and Jennifer McGonis for a special permit under sections four point two point E point five and twelve point five of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary to install an in-ground swimming pool at eighty-nine Bridge Street, assessor's map number twenty-seven, lot number thirteen in District C, filed with the town clerk on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a second? Sir, John seconds. Any discussion? Take a vote. Rob?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Sarah votes yes. Okay. Now we get to sixteen Jersey Lane. I will open the public hearing for the application of Davis Keniston for a variance under section five point zero and twelve point three of the zoning bylaw. And her other relief is may be necessary for the construction of a hundred and twenty-seven square foot garden shed at sixteen Jersey Lane, assessor's map number twenty-six, lot number twelve in District C, filed with the town clerk on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Keniston, are you gonna present your application to us?
Have you not got everything you need?
We need a presentation of a public hearing.
Oh. No, I, I had proceeded with, as you all know, with the building shed because I'd done due diligence by reading the bylaws and was under the impression, the same thing that I was second under the impression when I did call the town was that because it was under two hundred square feet, that the same setback conditions that are part of the zoning bylaws didn't apply. And it may have been a confusion on my part, both in what I read and also when I called in to get confirmation. Because I understood that it didn't have plumbing, it didn't have electrical, and it was a garden shed. And also knowing that every other location on my property was basically unable and inhabitable, basically. There's no place to build any other structure except the potential of a garage in the future, which I'm still in the process of working toward. And if I build the shed in that location, right now, it's, it's irregular terrain. And it's kind of a call for blasting and that sort of thing to build the garage. So I didn't want to go and start putting a garden shed in that location, only got to tear it down. Anyway, believing that it was in a suitable location and why, I proceeded with the construction of it. It was later when I found out after a complaint that it didn't meet the requirements. And I talked to Paul about it and we explained pieces that I was unaware, Paul Orlando. That I was unaware of. And so I'm here to appeal. Jersey Lane's a private lane and I actually didn't want the shed where it's located. I wanted it further back for my own sense of you know, comfort and having it not even that obvious to me. Unfortunately, where I have it was the only suitable place where it was structurally sound. It's already on sonotubes that are stilted up. And I didn't want to have it. I didn't want to bring in fill. I wanted to maintain the character of the terrain in that area. So that's when I moved it closer to the road, made sure it was gonna be okay, called the fire department about the hydrant that's there. They said, no problem, as long as they have access to the hydrant, can propose on it, and that was all fine. So that's why I proceeded to build it there.
Thank you. Question, the voice?
As you know, I was at the site visit the other day. Can you just confirm for the folks who are not, who are not there? And I'm sorry if I skipped through this. How, how far is the shed from the street right now, roughly, from your property line?
The property line is in the middle of the road, but it's vague because the town shows it on their map as the middle of the road. I've understood since I bought the property, it's in the middle of the road. Yet, the survey map that was done previously that's on file references the wall. So there's an ambiguity as to exactly what is the property line. My impression is that the wall is an indication of a solid basis by which they could measure. And so the middle of the road is actually where the division point is between me and the property above me. So it's, I believe it's like twelve feet. Fifteen feet, fifteen feet from the center of the road.
Yeah.
And it's only about three feet from the wall.
Did you, did you receive a violation notice from the building department?
Yes, I did.
I don't see it here.
It wasn't included.
It wasn't?
Yeah, well.
That's just, I mean, I don't see it here, so it's hard to know what it is that you're feeling if I don't see the initial notice of violation. And that's all, that's all.
It's, here it is. It's dated September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, we, we didn't make it.
Okay, thanks. It says, Dear Mr. Keniston, it has been brought to the attention of my office that an accessory structure has been constructed at your property at sixteen Jersey Lane, referenced above. A site inspection revealed that structure is located closer to your property lines than the zoning bylaw allows. Section five point six of the Town and Manchester zoning bylaw requires a front setback of forty feet and side and rear setback of fifteen feet for any accessory structure in your zoning district. Your structure is in violation of said section of the bylaw. It is a requirement of this office that the structure be moved to meet the required setbacks within thirty days of your receipt of this order. Failure to comply with this order will result in fines of three hundred dollars per day. You may email me or contact me at the above number with any questions you have. Thank you for your anticipated cooperation resolving this matter, Paula Lane.
I had also talked to Paul about the deadline. He said, don't worry about that at this point. Actually vague on exactly whether it was circumstance regarding his availability to come talk to me. Or if it was something that we had just a conflict on, I wasn't able to see him. So he said, you know, the thirty days is not really point, as long as you just take it in by November thirteenth. So I did that.
And for the board's benefit, I know you mentioned this on Saturday, but you, you stopped working on it as soon as you received that letter.
Oh, yeah, yeah. And it's a shame because it's exposed the elements and everything. So I, you know, and it was, you know, it's gonna look a lot nicer when it's done. It's just, it's not in time.
So you're required to have a forty-foot setback, and do we know what you have now?
From what I believe to be my property line, middle of the road, it's like fifteen feet. Yeah.
It's three feet, it's three feet from the edge of the road.
It's three feet, okay.
From the wall, the actual edge of the road.
What is the required, it's a front setback or a side setback here?
This is a front setback.
Okay, so it's forty feet? Is it a requirement?
Yes.
So.
The property is, well, you can see from the, if you look at the survey.
Yep.
Jersey Lane goes all around this property.
Yeah.
And no structure could be built in the middle of a road, so you really have to do it from the wall, not from the middle.
It's, it's almost virtually impossible to build much of anything on my property. The house is already perched on the edge of the ledge. My own basement is ledge. Every fact, piece of the foundation is on ledge. And it's, it's a hard, hard property to be able to put any kind of secondary insulator structures on.
Sean?
On the background of your property, you have an, an area where you had some boats. And there's a little road access down there.
Yes.
Was there a problem with construction down in that area?
When it comes to getting a snow blower, a lawnmower, any kind of equipment, to put anything down there would be futile. It, it wouldn't serve a purpose. Because having to simply mow the small lawns I have and do garden work and pot plants and things like that, what a garden shed is about, this wouldn't make any sense. I'd have to literally do it every time, put the lawnmower in the back of a trailer and drive it up. And there are times when that access just is not feasible because it becomes too slippery, you know, depending on the conditions. Those boats go down there and just stay there until it's a suitable time to be able to bring them up if I want to use them.
I guess to my, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead. That's okay.
My concern is that this lot is almost two and a half acres. And it just, I struggle with that. One hundred and twenty-seven square foot garden shed, right? It's good to be another spot. That's what I struggle.
And I understand that. I feel like this is actually a good spot for the shed, though. When you think about it, it really is, like, because the gardens are right there. The, the site is, you know, steep, it's challenging. The, the house, the house is big. And there's a lot of vegetation and trees. So I get what you're saying, but at the same, if you're thinking about it from a convenience perspective, you have like the lawn up there, the garden up there. And the driveways are right there. It's right off the, you know, flat area of driveway.
But this is a valley.
I get it. But we have to ask ourselves, if this came before us as an application for a variance, would we approve it? Seems like there's an honest mistake that was made here.
The, the segments of a variance that we have to take into consideration is whether there is a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise. Can we grant the variance without substantial detriment to the public good? I don't know whether they're gonna plow this, no, with the shed so close. And can we grant the variance without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw? The intent and purpose of the bylaw is, you have forty-foot setback for frontage. So those are the components we need to, to, to consider.
I had one other question. So on this other, on your plans that you had, you had a proposed garage. And you also had a, when I asked you the other day, you had a, a mark up there where you were.
That was the only, because of the topography of my property, that was the only other place where I could pull up a shed that is remote from a garden shed, that is remote from the gardens. There are no gardens over there. And there are no gardens on the west side of the house completely. It's, it's just, it just drops off. And so the other thing was that it did not, you know, I had it drawn, it did not conform to, and I, this was all post tense, even though I thought that it conformed. I was under misunderstanding on that by doing my own due diligence and talking to the building department. So post tense, I did that in the drawing to say, even there, it wouldn't conform based upon Paul Orlando's letter. There's a wet area that is down in that, that ravine area. And we can keep close to the road based upon setbacks.
So I have a question. So when you did, you, you due diligence and they said you need a forty-foot front setback. They didn't say that?
They didn't say that, no.
What did they say?
What she said on the phone was that the, she said, does it have electricity? I said, no. Does it have plumbing? No. She said, is it over two hundred square feet? And I said, no. And she said, well, based upon that, you can put it in a reasonable place. It does not have to conform to the setbacks, which was weird for me because I I, not weird for me, actually, that's what I interpreted, was that it didn't have to conform to setbacks from what I read. And maybe it's ambiguous, but also my understanding was, it says the front of the building. And the front of the building actually is perpendicular to the road. So it goes right down my property. It doesn't point face toward the road like a garage would. So I interpreted that as being the front of the building. So the front of the building actually just goes into my property. It doesn't go face the road. And so even then, I thought maybe it was.
There's nothing in the bylaw that references front of a property. It's, it's any portion, any portion of a structure can't be in the setback. It doesn't matter whether it's the back, the side, or the front.
Oh, then what's the fifteen and forty-five?
The setbacks vary by whether.
The property line setbacks.
Of the building?
No, of the lot.
Okay, I'm confused by that.
Your frontage is on Jersey Lane.
Yes.
So that has a front setback of forty feet. The other, the other lines of your property that are not on Jersey Lane are side and rear setbacks, which have the fifteen feet. Were you a butt other, like, are you a butt James Elder? Justin Heater is what's listed on the survey.
Oh. I misunderstood.
And Thomas Bell?
I thought the, the sides from, even when Paul visited, he said your side and gestured to fifty, said it, you know, has to be so far back, that kind of thing. By the way, the point for me is after doing a lot of due diligence on that property, try to figure out where I put the garden shed that would serve my needs for garden shed and what I plan to put on it and use it, put in it and use it. There just wasn't any other spot where it is right. And so I ended up near that spot. I wanted to push it further away from the road, but if I did, it would be on stilts. And I'd have to bring in fill, and I did not want to bring in fill because there's nice gardens in that area. I have these ledge gardens that I put in. This time of year, you can't really tell, but they're pretty. And they're down behind the shed, and I didn't want to disrupt them.
Okay. Let me open it up to comments from the public. Sir, do you, do you want?
I guess I'm the public.
You, you, yeah, state your name and address, please.
I will. My name is William McConnell, and I live at seventeen Jersey Lane.
Okay.
I suspect that if you've had a chance to take a look at the property recently, you have not seen what the neighbors have seen over the last ten or fifteen years. The property is used as a boarding house.
I beg your pardon?
And.
It is not?
And at various times in the recent past, there have been four or five cars parked along the edge of the road from his property up towards the butter, eleven Duski's property.
This is not true. This is not true. I'm sorry. He's been harassing me.
As a boarding.
Mr. Keniston, you need to restrain yourself.
I know, it's a bitter situation.
As a boarding house.
We're not, excuse me, we're not, we're not considering anything about a boarding house. We're only considering the garden shed. So you need to keep the comments to the gar, what's before us.
Yes.
Okay.
All I'm trying to do is paint the picture of how the property's been used and the activities that have been right along the road in the immediate past. To give you sort of an idea of what the property has looked like until very recently, when the applicant put the application in. And the point I guess I'm trying to make is that the very frontage along here has had a lot of activity on it. The boarding house, which I know is acceptable under our rules, still has resulted in a lot of cars parked along the road and in the circle. At one time, he rented out a spot where somebody parked a van right on the road in which they were living with a power cable run out from the house. The property really is quasi-commercial with rope storage, car storage, off-road vehicle storage. Much of this until recently, right along the road. The only real protection the neighbors have is this one item where an accessory structure really shouldn't be right up on the road with all of this other congestion, but should be set back a reasonable distance from the road. So I don't think the immediate neighbors, because I can only speak for myself, are really cheerful about the idea of an additional item right up on the road. As I say, what you may have seen in a site viewing is quite a bit different from what the place looked like even three weeks ago. Dump trailers parked right on the edge of the road. Unregistered cars on the edge of the road. So we're hoping there might be some protection here from this one issue and the one accessory structure. There probably are other spots on the property where it could be located, maybe not quite as convenient for the applicant, but would meet the zoning requirements. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for your patience.
Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to speak on this application? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anybody with their hand raised. Yes, Mr. Kennesaw.
Thank you.
Briefly.
I, I'm gonna try my best to be as tactful as I can. Mr. McConnell has lied. Okay, I bought the property in twenty seven years ago. And I have painstakingly gone to great effort to restore the antiquity of that house. And, uh, spent a great deal of money doing so as well as building beautiful gardens and stone, you know. Just landscaping and making it wonderful. The point about parts parked along the road, it's a lie. In fact, did I have some tenants within the house in the past? I had tenants with it out, which he has tried to alienate to me and they've come back and said things that are false.
We don't need to go there, Mr. Kennesaw.
Exactly. It's not a boarding house. I have the right to have housemates within the house and I do that.
That's correct.
I've done this with one at this point, alright, and in the past, when there are. Situations within the parking in front of the house that are a challenge, then a car, a car will park. Up past where you saw my trailers off the side there where it's off the road. And recently, because I don't have any tenants, there isn't a, a juggling situation because it's a wishbone driveway with four cars. And two of which have been mine. The boats down below are not offending anybody and I have had. Dozens of compliments on the shed and my other neighbors, Cynthia and Philip liked the shed. They, they, they think it's wonderful, okay, and they're beyond me and they abut me. The, the, uh, point about any other location, no, there isn't any other location unless I go to extreme. Efforts. Mr. McConnell has been harassing me for.
Okay, that's enough, but we're not gonna have a back and forth between the neighbors.
I, I just expected this.
That's not the purpose of this meeting.
Yes, I understand.
And I can tell you, I walk that street a lot. And in fact, where the garden shed is, there was a lot of stuff there. I will say that.
Because it needed to go into the shed, that was the point.
But, um, and I would question whether you have a doc, uh, approval for a driveway, anything to say from the planning.
Mean where it is particularly located right now? That's been there, that's. That's grand plot, that's been there. It's a side parking area that's been there before I bought the house.
I only have one question.
Yeah.
There's a fire hydrant, is that located on, on your property or?
It's on my property.
That's on your property, but.
I, I believe it is because.
But it belongs to the. Uh, roughly, how close to, to the fire hydrant, uh, is, is the shed built?
Three and a half feet, I think it is.
Okay, so roughly three and a half feet away.
Fire department did come up and take a look at it.
And have they supplied any comments to us here today?
No, no, I don't think they have. They, they, they said it was fine to me, so. That would have been a major concern of mine because it's my fire hydrant for my house, you know, and I would not want.
Right, right. Uh, are there, I mean, I know it's hard to see here, but are there any other properties that this fire hydrant could serve in case of an emergency?
In case of emergency, I think the only one would be up Jersey Lane would be seventeen or twenty-four, but they have a hydrant right by the. Right on twenty-four's property, which is right across the street from seventeen.
So, I mean, I can't see it here, but.
Yeah, yeah.
In the case of emergency, this could be used for.
Supplement, yes, yes.
And again, I don't know exactly where the, where the water is coming into feet. This doesn't come across your properties. Under the shed, it's the next to the shed, is it around the shed?
Water, where it's coming from.
Right.
Center of the road.
Center of the road.
Yeah.
So you, you didn't build the shed over the pipeline?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Is there, is there any way that we can confirm that?
That you can do what? The water department can do that, yes. Yeah, because the line goes down the middle of the road. I actually have looked into changing the water line. From the public water line to my house in the past, and I know that based upon my conversations with the town. The line is in the middle of the road.
So, I mean, you know, my concern is we have pure puddings, we have concrete, we have digging, and we also have a water line, we have a fire hydrant, we have a public safety device that is. Adjacent to it. That concern.
Yeah.
The concern is because I don't know.
Sure.
Something has happened.
Yeah, the, the.
I, I believe that you're saying that nothing's happening, but and if I am not provided with evidence.
Yeah.
Then I'm always gonna have that doubt.
Yeah, the, the concrete piers are in ledge. Every one of them is in ledge. The ledge was already there. It had a skin of. Dirt on it, some roadies were growing in. Where the shed sits now was a berm of road dendrons. And I moved them out alongside the road to buffer visibility of the shed. Just as a landscaping cosmetic detail, but every one of those concrete puddings, the exception of one corner, which is actually on the ledge. Are all anchored into ledge. There's nothing but ledge behind that wall.
There any photographs of that?
Yeah, I can supply photographs.
You have them?
On me right now.
No, I mean, you've.
Yeah, I took pictures of every process of this as I was building it, every step along the way.
Well, why did you do it?
For my story, just, I do that. Anytime I make anything, I, I just take pictures of it. I did the restoration of the house. It was a fore and afters. I like it. I like to see what I started with and what I ended up with. It's kind of like it took this much effort to do it and do it right and do it sound. Now, in an architectural degree, I just, I knew about the engineering and how to make it stick with its sound. And it was important to me, those puddings are actually a rebar in the ledge so that they stay stall, solid and nothing can move them.
Uh, you're an architect as well?
Retired at this point, yeah.
Um, do you have any questions?
No, I was just curious about this status.
Yeah.
Because of the size of the structure, there was no building permit required.
Correct, because it's under two hundred square feet, it doesn't require a building permit, but that does not excuse it from zoning. And that's what the struggle is.
That's where my misunderstanding was.
Can I just say one more thing?
Briefly, as long as it's not attacking your neighbor. If it's gonna attack your neighbor.
No, no, I'm, I'm. I, I just wanted to say that generally I'm not considered a liar or a harasser. And just leave it at that.
Thank you.
Hey, I just wanted you to know, generally I'm not.
Thank you.
In town, considered to be the, a liar.
Um, Captain. Do you have any questions right now? John?
Uh, just really quick on that fire hydrant. You know, half that shed is basically hanging over the ledge, so I'm not really concerned about the water line underneath it, but. What I did think about when I was there was that, that hydrant's essentially in the middle of a driveway area and so. Thinking of someone like maybe at night who sees that as a turnaround and is not really paying attention. They, they see that, you know, I mean, that's obviously a tight area up there, and so if they go to turn around in that little spot. And that hydrant's just kind of in the middle of the, the driveway where people don't expect it. That, you know, is a concern, like, something I thought about while I was there. And, you know, like, I also live in that area. I, I go up there a lot, just like Sarah does and, you know, there are moments where I notice there's a lot of. Things out there in the driveway and so I'm thinking, okay, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to organize some things. So like I go back and forth, I, for me, I, I, this does sound like an honest mistake from you. And, uh, I don't know, is this an opportunity to, to maybe get organized a little bit and, and tidy up? That, so.
That was my parking area and it was just, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
I, I guess I struggle with that, John, because if I put a garden shed.
I get it.
On my street. That's an issue.
I know.
I have a structure that's built right next to my property line. Which I believe is a violation. So, you know, I, it, it just bothers me.
I'm, I'm not saying like deny it or prove, but these are my, these are my thoughts, you know, these are my thoughts. I'm, I'm trying to like. See the benefit of here and.
It's a, it's a beautiful shed.
I, I think it looks nice. Um, I don't think it's gonna, you know, uh. Impact traffic or anything. I don't think it's gonna impact so reasonable.
No, never have. You sure never gets that far off the road.
I mean, I guess that sort of goes to like, you know, the purpose of having a setback, right? It's not just to have a setback, it's for safety, for views, for interference with neighbors, right? It's not just because, so what are the purposes of having a setback? And then is the shed interfering with those purposes, I think would be the question that would be, we should be really asking here.
And that's, yeah, and that's what I'm asking, you know, like, there's, there's, there's a lot of ledge, it's very steep. It's not like there's, it's a garage where cars may be backing out of it into the road. It looks nice. And it, it, it sounds like the applicant attempted to do due diligence and was given the wrong information. Now, if he was given accurate information, he probably wouldn't be here. So those are my, my thoughts.
Only thing that bugs me is I keep looking at this, this proposed area where he's, has proposed, where he, there is area there where he could have done something different.
Right.
So it's not, it's not truly a hardship in my opinion.
You're referencing the area.
The proposed garage.
Rose garage and all that. Have you got enough area to do a garage and all that? It's, I have a little trouble with the.
Garage needs to, I already attempted to put in a garage about fifteen years ago. It didn't meet the setbacks. And so I was trying to do without blasting. And now in order to do a garage, to meet the setbacks from my neighbors to the west, I'm gonna have to do some major blasting. And so I've been trying to save up some money to be able to afford to blast, to put the garage where it is. If I were to build something closer to the property next, next door. I have a, um, a potential, uh, water issue. Because there's water down in there and I wanna respect the fact that there is this vernal flow of water. After the heavy rains we just had, it's all wet in there.
But I think what John is saying is that you've located a place on your property. Large enough for a garage. It seems to me you could build a hundred and twenty-seven square foot.
But then I'd have, I'd have to move the garage, I'd have to tear it down.
That's a choice.
I, I thought about it in advance and made the decision that tearing a shed down after spending twenty thousand dollars to build. It was, you know, wasted money. Plus, that location is so remote from my gardens, it wouldn't even be a garden shed. It was just gonna be a wood shed and I wouldn't want it. It had no purpose. A garage is a whole different thing because I can access the garage through a back door that goes right to my front door. In drawing where the garage is. If I had put a shed there, it'd be a moot point. I wouldn't do it.
I think that the, uh, one of the issues here is to say that there was no other part of the parcel where we could put the shed. When, I'm looking right here where's a, a proposed garage. Alright, so we do have an option over here.
I, I, I mean. You know.
No, my, there's a bigger picture here I'm looking at and this is not just necessarily this application. In the last four or five years, we've seen a lot of groups be coming back, okay? And begging for forgiveness as opposed, okay, and I'm just, I'm not saying that this, this, this. Classifies probably as, as John points out, as miscommunication and misunderstanding. However, it just, it falls on the heels of one, another, and two or three in the last two years.
People, Brian.
And I, I don't wanna say that. There are precedents and I just, I'm where we straddle line.
No, I mean, I can understand someone who makes a mistake. A Massachusetts registered design professional knows full well how zoning works. I mean, and documented the whole procedure from the get-go, knowing full well that this might be a possibility.
Actually, I, I didn't.
You, you're an architect.
I'm retired. I actually, I was trained as an architect and. Alright, fine.
Let's, let's be honest.
I am.
Your profession.
Only, the only thing I have, it's like you said, for, for variance, we have to show a hardship. I, I don't think we have a hardship here. For the garden shed.
Agreed.
I don't know, I, I'm kinda torn on this one. I will say, I think we've approved hardships on other things with topographical variations. Just there was no opposition and we were like, sure, your land's oddly shaped, we'll let you do it.
It hasn't been for a hundred and twenty-seven square foot garden shed.
Okay, it's been for other things, but.
Larger things.
Yeah.
But I, I guess what's the point?
The point is when you have topographical. Differences in your yard, it's a lot easier to find, find a spot for something that's a hundred and twenty-seven square feet. Than for something that's a thousand square feet.
That's true.
I, I.
Okay.
I, yeah. You know, I, I distinguish, distinguish that. I mean, I have a shed behind my garage that is close to my gardens.
Me too. It's terribly inconvenient. It's all the way down at the bottom by my driveway. Yeah.
To that point, what constitutes the hardship? Not having a garden shed?
Not having a tennis court? I mean, come on, we, we get these all the time. We get hardship applications for tennis courts in this town. Because their land is oddly shaped and it has to go over here.
I mean, I, I built the shed and I called the town, I said, what are my setbacks? And they gave my setbacks and I have a plot plan and I staked it out and I measured it and I put it in. And I had a survey come out and that's, or I did it, if I can do it, and I'm certainly not, you know, I never went to architectural school.
Alright, alright. I wanna, yeah, if I may, that I know the property inside and out, up and down, round and through. And if a hardship is not approved, there is no other place. There simply is no other place. I will be tearing the shed down and disposing of it and it will cost me a lot of money. Because I know the property and I know I can't put it anywhere else. Alright, so I'm not gonna build a garden shed way on the other side of the road where I'm having to push my lawnmower down the road. And it just to me doesn't make any sense. Every time I need a tool or trowel or wanna plot something, I have to go for a hike. It, I won't build it. I won't move it.
That's, that's your choice.
I know, but I'm just saying I did my due diligence and I really did think I was building it in the right spot.
You know, nothing that says a person needs a garden shed. People get it that way too.
Um, that's the stuff that was in that, that area that you said was a mess, was the stuff that was supposed to go in the garden shed and it was sitting there. You know, because I wanted to get it tucked away and out of sight, but that was my only working area close to the garden, so that's why that area was looking like it did.
So, the situation is, is that. Five members vote. You need four of the voting members to support your application in order for it to be approved. Um, if, if two say no, then it's denied. And you can't come back before the board for two years.
Can I clarify something?
Yes.
Is this an appeal from an enforcement order?
This is an application for a variance.
So he's not appealing that enforcement letter, okay? It's a straight application for variance as if from the very beginning.
Correct. Because that's what Paul told him he needed. They either, either had to tear down the shed or obtain a bid. Well, it.
Says right here, appeal of an administrative decision.
So I'm just trying to make sure that we're using the right.
Well, we've presented with no information on an appeal.
I thought he was appealing the, the enforcement action. That's the first thing I asked, why don't we?
That's what I thought.
Why don't we have the big enforcement action?
That's not what.
That's what I understood.
Well, what's the basis of your appeal?
My appeal feels that, uh, I first off, I did my due diligence trying to find.
That's, that doesn't.
Alright, I don't understand, okay, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so, the. The enforcement order is saying that you've built something in the setback and it's not allowed.
Yeah.
Um, so if you're appealing that decision, then you would be saying I didn't build it in the setback. That's the only appeal you can have. And so if, if you. Want to keep it where it is, then you have to apply for a variance.
Which is what I thought was the hardship variance.
Or you can, or you can just move it to a conforming location.
There is.
Move it back forty feet and bring in the fill that you don't wanna.
If I move it back forty feet, it will be elevated probably about twelve feet in the air. And, and then it'll fall off the cliff, okay? There is no place right there. If you were at the site visit, you would have seen, you can still go up there and take a look. It, it is perched. It, it is perched on a ledge. And it drops off to a terraced area, and then the ledge drops off probably about sixty feet beyond that.
So, so in reality, a- as you, as you've said, this is in the most convenient location for you to have a shed.
Structurally sound, convenient, well thought out, well researched. I did not just throw out one quickly, it was, I wanted to put it someplace that made sense and was gonna be suitable and strong and sound.
Exactly, so, which is exactly how I struggled to see how you made a mistake with your zoning setbacks.
It was the call, the phone call that I misunderstood, because I thought when I said, are there any other things that?
So you you can't do this much due diligence and then make an accidental mistake and have a bullet point.
We don't know what was said.
Right.
By the cat. We do not have that.
It wasn't on the phone call.
And I, you know, I would kind of expect that she would have said you don't need to build it.
You don't need a building permit, correct?
She wouldn't know about the setbacks. Right?
Yeah, that's true. That's very interesting.
So is the sense of the board that there are not four members in favor of this application?
I'm not voting.
So, it appears as if there are not four members of the board that have gone vote favorably on your application. Um, which would lead to a denial. If you don't want a denial, you would have the option to withdraw your application without prejudice.
What, how would that help me?
If he gets denied, he has the option to appeal in land court. So that's the other option, is if you take the vote and it's denied, you have the option to appeal it in court. Or you can decide not to have us vote, in which case there would, if the vote, if the board voted to deny your application, um, the consequence would probably be a removal order. Um, which, as I said, you can appeal that, or if you didn't want that removal order issued in the first place, you could withdraw your application. And I suppose choose a new location for your shed. Although I've heard you say that there isn't one, but that's what the option would be to you, so. I think those are the options on the table, right? Those are the paths one could take.
Or continue to buy himself another thirty days to figure out perhaps, you know, another location, just next steps?
Continue it, but I.
I mean, this order was issued in the middle of September.
Yep. Yeah.
It's already been three months. I don't see what a continuance will, how that would help.
So are we voting on this? Go ahead.
Yeah, you're you have on the table some o- options.
Yeah.
I wanna better understand those options. They have, they say, if I don't want you to vote on it, then I can take it to land court.
No, you can only take it to land court if we vote on it and deny it.
I see, okay.
If you don't agree with our decision, if we make a vote and you don't agree with it, that's something you can appeal.
Right. Now, does land court address it from a hardship situation?
I'm gonna look at the zoning bylaws and whether we followed them.
Whether you follow them.
Right.
It'll be nothing to the hardship.
Well, the hardship's one of the requirements we have to consider, I mean. Yeah. So, did you, do you want us to proceed, or do you wanna withdraw your application, or?
And by withdrawing my application, where does that leave you?
You have to tear tear it down.
You have to tear it down.
So, then then.
Or you can move, or you can move it.
Yeah, we'll tear it down. There's no place to put it, trust me, I did my due diligence on this. It's sad.
And if we deny it, you have to tear it down.
Or take it to court.
Okay. I moved to close a public hearing and approve the application of David Kenniston for a variance under sections five point zero and twelve point three of the zoning bylaw, and or other relief as may be necessary, to complete the construction of a partially built a hundred and twenty seven square foot garden shed in its current location in the front setback, based on a finding that owing to circumstances related to the shape and topography of this land, especially affecting such land but not generally the zoning district in which it is located, a literal enforcement of the provisions of the bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the applicant, and the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the bylaw at sixteen Jersey Lane, assessors map number twenty six, block number twelve, District C, filed with the town clerk on November thirteenth, twenty twenty three, based on the condition the garden shed is located in accordance with the two block plans prepared by Nor- Northeast Survey dated December fourteenth, twenty twenty three. Do I have a second?
A second.
John seconds. Any discussion? Okay, I'll take a vote. Rock.
Nope.
Any opinions for a no vote?
Fire hydrant. It's too close to the fire hydrant, I think it poses a safety issue.
Uh, Catherine?
Approved.
Okay. John?
Prove.
John?
Good night.
And I have none. Based on the fact that I believe it irrigates the intent or purpose of the bylaw of having a front setback. Um, and that there's a large enough lot, it doesn't seem to me that we need to have a garden shed right along the road. So there's a lot of hardship as far as I'm concerned. Okay, so this, this fails on a vote of two, two to three. Okay, so, so the permit will be denied.
So for an understanding about the second from my property line, allegedly pretense, whatever, uh, the shed has to be forty five feet for my property.
Forty, forty.
Forty feet.
Based on the survey we received. Does anybody wanna write it? Do you want me to write it?
You got nothing to do while you're traveling, so nap, I listen.
Who wants to review it?
Oh.
John will review it.
Just come back with a new location. You can always come back with a new location.
No, he doesn't come back to us.
No?
No.
That's something else, no?
If, if it we've denied the variance.
Okay. He can't, oh.
So.
You better have to go someplace else.
No, he just says, he just, if he built the fault said within his setback.
He doesn't, yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
What, what, I think what he's saying is, let's say if he, if he finds a spot that's within thirty feet. Can he come back for a special permit?
Two years.
No, it has to be substantially different application, right?
Right, cuz it.
Totally different spot, but.
If it's, yeah, exactly.
It's a different spot.
It just has to be a different app, substantially different application. You can't come back with basically the same thing tweaked a little bit.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, so if he decides to put in the proposed garage area.
That would be different application.
Just come back with a new location.
Need us.
Would probably not.
But it, in case it's like thirty feet and not the full forty, that's a situation where he'd have to be in front of us again. Correct? It obviously depends on the circumstance.
They arise on that, John, because it's a question of whether it's substantially different, yeah.
Yeah.
Whether it's substantially different.
We've never, I mean, my my seven years doing this, I've never seen that situation where we deny something and they come back. Right? I haven't, I haven't seen it.
Most people withdraw their applications.
Yeah.
Without prejudice, so that they're not hitting the denial. But that's everyone's personal preference. Okay, here we go.
May I ask you questions?
Yes.
Um, so at this point, you've denied.
Yeah.
Um, I have a period of time to demolish it. Um, with winter coming on. Um, does that not matter or anything about that?
Uh, I I think that you should have that discussion with the building inspector. And negotiate that with him.
Okay.
Okay.
Right.
Um, we're not gonna give.
Your timeframe for a new enforcement order.
He's the code enforcer, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's the authority there.
Right.
Okay, um. So this decision will be written within the next ninety days sometime. Probably sooner than that, but, um, and then it will be filed with the town clerk. Once it's filed with the town clerk, you have twenty days to appeal it to the land court if you so desire.
Okay.
Okay.
And where's the land court? In Salem?
No, I.
I think, um, yeah, I think it is in Salem.
Is it Salem? Yeah.
It's the Essex County Land Court. I'm never in land corp, but in Essex County.
Southern Essex, right?
I think so, yeah, yeah, we're southern. I think it is in Salem.
And it's a pretty formal process. Appeal it to the land court.
On Congress Street in Salem.
That's where I think it is, yeah.
So that's.
Right, at a family court.
Where all those courts are in the same area?
No, I think, I think the, uh, I was thinking of the red, the D, registered Ds. These aren't.
Yeah. Wherever you go for jury duty, it's all, they're all.
I've had to go to Houser.
I was there with someone. Okay.
Twenty eight units.
Um, we'll move on to administrative matters. Minutes to review, October eighteenth minutes. Do people have a chance to look at those?
Uh, did we?
No, I I did not.
No, no, we didn't. We didn't either.
I have reviewed it. I know I have changes to the November fifteenth ones. Thank you, Mr. Kennison.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah, you edited the October minutes.
Right, the October, but other people haven't looked at them.
I wrote a decision.
So we, we're not.
That's the one that he was supposed to review? You were supposed to review his decision?
Where? So we're, we can't approve either the October, November minutes. Yet. We'll take those up in January.
Yep.
Status of decisions. I did mine.
I'm gonna mine too.
I did mine. Are we all, are we good, Gail?
You are.
Woo, woo, unusual.
Um, anything else that anybody would like to raise?
I have one thing.
Yes, Gail.
Please save the hard copies of the applications that were in your folders and that we didn't hear. I think I took out Mr. Falzone, but you may have one or two. Save those, please.
Have Ritu Snee.
Yeah, I'll I'll put this back in my total of them.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and Gail, I'll, I'll leave these continuances I've signed in the ZB mailbox.
Okay, that works too.
Or I can put it, no, I'll put it in an envelope. I have an envelope from the stuff I got.
All right.
Okay.
That was fun.
So anything else, Major? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.